Good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of adjustment, meaning to order. Thank you, Attorney Prunier. This is the 25th of February and we are now called to order. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk, who is the Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. And please bear with me, this is my first night sitting in this chair, so I just wanted to let you know ahead of time that I will probably screw up, but just go with it. I will. I have all these people here to help. And over here we have Mr. Jay Mancara, Mr. Rob Shaw, Mr. J.P. Boucher, Mrs. Staphia Boras, and our clerk is Mr. Jack Courier. And I'm your chair, I'm Mary Ellen McKay. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, audio tape, and video, and these instructions are a bit long, folks, but we need to go through them. Please direct all testimony into the microphone, and only one person should speak at a time. If you do not already have a copy of tonight's agenda, it should be back on the table. And please feel free to get up and get a copy. Tonight we will be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: the requested use must be listed in the Table of Use Regulations as a special exception; the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the District of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interest; the spirit of the ordinance is observed; substantial justice is done; the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. For the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any and all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at the meeting. And tonight, we actually have a contingent of six, and so we have five...
Four.
Four permanent members and two alternates. So we will start out each case alternating between Mr. Mancara and Ms. Boras as the voting members. And I'll indicate that before each case begins. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Falk and the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will have 15 minutes to present their case. Those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. The applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. A representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we will get them answered. Second part is the public meeting, where this board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. If you need to have a conversation, please feel free to step out into the hallway. The acoustics in this auditorium are such that we can hear the slightest whispers and appreciate your cooperation in this matter. Also, we have a clock that you will see that will tick off the time for when you speak. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? And does anyone have any questions before we begin? Okay, then we will start with the first case. This is Suzanne R. Sullivan, owner, Equavice LLC applicant, 17 Curtis Drive, she... C lot 793, requesting the following: special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-112 to work within the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook; and two, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 15 feet into the 40-foot required front yard setback. Both requests to construct a new single-family home. This is in the R40 zone, Ward 9. Good evening, Mr. Prunier.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices in Nashua. If I may, Miss Chairman, could I pass out some handouts?
Absolutely.
Thank you. If this case seems familiar, it's because we had a lot just recently, about a year or so ago, on Curtis Drive, the same particular facts of this particular case. If I may just go through this package on the section in A is... shows Curtis Drive. It shows the subdivision that was approved in January of 1965, and the two lots are the site as at the end of the roads, lots 29 and 30. The section B is a deed that was printed out to the present owners, and that deed was in April 22, 1976, approximately a year later after the subdivision was approved by the Nashua Planning Board. C is the same... is that same plan with a few changes, where a few lots were consolidated and a cul-de-sac was in. It did not affect these particular lots, but it... except for the cul-de-sacs, which you'll show on the lots where the proposed residence is going to be, or proposed to be. D is a lot consolidation where they... lots 29 and 30, the lots we're talking about, were consolidated back in... the date on that is 1988. E is a copy of the lots as they're consolidated and as the buffers are shown on that particular lot. And the last one... excuse me, it's not the last one. It's the lot as shown with the proposed residence, single-family residence on it. We're here this evening for... and I will go through G. I submitted, Madam Chairman, the special requirements with the application, and I'm also submitting it here. I don't know if you want me to read through it or just accept it as being part of the record.
For the record, should we read it, or is it okay to ask the board? Would the board be okay with accepting Mr. Prunier's documentation and acceptance that he has read and agreed to the exceptions? Or do you want them all read into the record?
I'm fine with the written testimony.
And that's okay?
Yes.
Notting okay. Mr. Prunier, that's okay? The board will accept your documents?
Thank you. The reason that we're here today is because there is a wetlands ordinance that was passed in the City of Nashua in 1991. The wetland ordinance greatly affected these particular lots. As you can see...
Attorney Prunier, just one second. Just a bit of housekeeping. Ms. McKay, you didn't announce which alternate was going to vote on the case.
Oh, I apologize. I'm so sorry. Mr. Mancara will vote on this case, and Ms. Boras with the next one, and we'll alternate.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we're here because of... we need a special exception in order to work in the buffers and have the single-family residents located where it is. I'd like to have also incorporated two cases which were heard by this board, and that's referenced to 13 Cathy Drive and on Curtis Drive, the lot that sits down the street. Both of those cases, which were approved by the board, are similar to this case. The facts are similar, and that's why I presented them as I did. The lots were approved, as I indicated, in 1965, and the Nashua Wetlands Ordinance was passed in 1991. This was 26 years after the approval of the subdivision. It is our position, as it was in the other cases, that this lot is vested or grandfathered from the zoning changes which were subsequent to this creation. You can do nothing else with this lot except build a single-family residence, which would comply with the zoning of that particular area. If permits are not allowed, all economical benefit and productive use of the land will be taken, which is unconstitutional. The location of the house has been carefully considered to minimize the impacts. The special exception standards, the requirement for special exception is included in the use matrix. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overflow any public water, drainage, or sewer. The special exceptions were referred to as part of the submission in Section G. And the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district. It's all single-family's homes, and we're prepared... we're suggesting that we want to build a single-family home. The variance request will not be contrary to public interest because we're building a single-family home, which is also... will not impair the character or be out of character with the district. The ordinance... the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance in that it provides... we're requesting for setbacks. If you remember the previous hearing, and we'll say in this one here, is that the Conservation Commission requested that we try to get a variance to keep the set... the house closer to the road. We are proposing the same thing that was requested at that time with the other residents on Curtis Drive, that we be allowed to bring the house forward. It'll be a new house. It'll not diminish the surrounding property values. It's going to be a single-family residence. Substantial justice will be done. The... because the lot existed prior to the zoning ordinance... the wetland ordinance being passed, it will also... the special conditions of all the wetlands in the particular area have greatly affected the lot, and substantial justice will be done by allowing it. I'm open for questions at this time, if they need be.
Thank you, Attorney Prunier. Does anyone on the board have any questions of Attorney Prunier? Mr. Mancara?
I might not be reading the plans correctly, but it appears as though there is a buildable window on the lot that is outside of the 75-foot buffer or the 50-foot wetlands buffer or the setbacks. Am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, it's... we're within the 75-foot buffer. We're going to disturb about 2,000 square feet.
I realize that's what the house is showing, but is there no portion of this lot that is not encumbered by either a wetlands buffer?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't... I missed your question. Yeah, no, the whole lot is covered by the buffer.
Okay, I guess I'm not reading the plan correctly, then. If I... I mean, I guess I'll go back to the point. I don't know if you have another plan available to reference, but I am looking at a 75-foot wetland buffer shown on the plan. I am looking at a 50-foot wetland buffer shown on the plan, and I'm seeing setbacks. And I guess I'm not understanding perhaps what those buffers are referencing. What am I missing?
Just the... this dash line is actually the 75-foot wetland buffer.
Right.
So that follows...
So this says 75 feet.
Right. And then it... then there's another, and it actually goes this way. So I think... I think this wetland... because you've got the shore land and the wetland, so...
Right. So I've got a 50-foot buffer here to this line.
Which is the waterfront buffer.
And then I've got a 75-foot buffer line here, and then I have the minimum setback, so it appears...
I think that the dedicated wetland...
Madam Chairman, I have our engineer with us here this evening. Maybe he could come up and...
That would be helpful. For me, it would be helpful. Where I'm trying to get to is to see whether or not the proposed home is proposed in the least impactful area. That's what I'm trying to understand.
I have a hard enough time practicing law. I don't want to interfere with the profession of engineering, so I'll let the engineer come up and answer your questions. Nate, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Thank you, Attorney Prunier. Your engineer can speak to our engineers.
No, you can do it from here. Do it from here. Do it from here, Nate.
And just grab the portable mic.
You have to state your name and...
Sure, sure.
Yep. I'll let him put it out. If you would please state your name and your address for the record, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Chamberlain, professional engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. This plan is very confusing. There's a lot of setbacks going on, and what we basically have here is... this is our proposed house. This is a lot. The green line here is the edge of jurisdictional wetland. All right? The jurisdictional wetland is what the city's setback is applied to. And then we have the edge of Salmon Brook, which is down here in blue, and that is what the state shoreline setback is applied to. So that's what the confusion is. So the purple line here is the shoreline, what's called the waterfront buffer. And then this other purple line is what's called the woodland buffer. And these are all state setbacks. Nothing to do with this, what we're talking about tonight. And then... so the green line, as I mentioned, is the edge of wet, jurisdictional wetland. And then this orange line is the 75-foot setback which we are seeking relief to. So as you can see, the entire lot is within the orange line.
Okay.
And we pretty much... if we want to... we pretty much tucked it in where we... the best location as far as relation to the jurisdictional wetland over here, where we have the building located. I mean, there's a little bit more room over here away from the site, but that's not going to... you're still 100% within the city's wetland setback, and you're still... we still need relief from the front setback. So... does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you. Sure.
Have any other questions?
Mr. Courier?
Mr. Prunier, you referenced the 13 Cathy Drive case and the other Curtis Drive case as similar to this. I remember both of those. I agree. But I was trying to remember about the Conservation Commission recommendation. Correct me if I'm wrong, did they recommend to not approve this?
They did not recommend... they didn't make any recommendation on this. Their recommendation was not to make one. They gave no reason for it. I have an idea, but it's... they gave no recommendation.
And on the Cathy Drive and Curtis, I remember they recommended favorably for it.
They recommended favorable as long as on the Cathy Drive. And on Curtis Drive, they recommended favorable by going back 15... by coming closer to the road by 15 feet. So that's why we provided for the variance request today, making it similar to what the... what the other lot was.
Okay. I mean, I was taking... I was interpreting their discussion and ruling as there was too much wetland on the property to be developable, and that's why they were recommending to not pass it. Would you interpret it differently than that? And if so...
I will tell you that I... this lot has more developable land than the other... the other two had.
And when you say developable land, is that not wet land?
They're all... they were all within the wetland buffer. But I'm... the higher land, that's in my application. I put in pictures to show you what it was because we're in the middle of snow down it. To show the wet... the topo is pretty flat, and there's quite a bit of it. Fact is, when you went out to see it, you saw all of the trees that were... that were out there and that are live. If they were in the wetlands and the water, then we wouldn't have that many trees. It's because of the configuration of the lot and the wetland ordinance requirements for the buffers and so forth that we have this particular lot. In fact, as you can see that the house... this is... this is the brook. You can see how far away the house is on the lot, trying to keep it there.
Just for clarification, that green line, everything south, if we want to call it that, or below the green line, is delineated as wet soil?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I don't know if it's wet soils.
Well, I'll say it a different way. Everything on this... the bottom of that green line is delineated as wetland.
They're buffers. Yeah. That's what... that's what... to comply with the wetland ordinance, that's correct.
I'm going to ask a question, and Attorney Prunier, I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, or if Mr. Shaw, Mr. Mancara, or Mr. Courier, or your engineer here. Could you please explain the difference between wetlands and wet soil?
Well, I'm going to give you my definition, but again, I fall back on the fact that I'm an attorney and not a wetland expert. I think wetlands is water. Wet soil is... has a high quantity of wetness to it. But I... but I would like to, Miss Madam Chairman, refer to my engineer, who might give you a better definition.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain, if you would please come up and state your name again for the record.
Nathan Chamberlain, Fieldstone Land Consultants. So the wetlands are jurisdictional wetlands, and there's certain criteria that has to be met. It includes the soil type, and it also includes the vegetation. So you'll have wetland soils and wetland vegetation. It doesn't necessarily mean it's wet soil. So that's pretty much where the definition falls. And you'll have wet meadow. It looks perfectly fine to most people, but it'll meet the criteria for a wetland, and this would be a wet... wet forest. But as far as... it's not muck or peat or anything like that. It's just it meets the criteria that's... you know, a wet scientist has to follow when he does his wetland mapping.
And so because this is totally... I don't understand the difference. I'm not an engineer.
Sure.
Building on wet soil is more or less prohibited than building on wetlands?
So we're not... we're not building... we're not disturbing the wetland at all. We're only working within the wetland buffer.
Okay, so within the buffer. So then...
We're on the upland. We're not on wet soil. We're... we're outside the wetland. So we're just asking to be able to work within the wetland buffer, the 75-feet setback that the city has in...
Okay, I understand that piece. So yes, Mr. Courier, because I was going to look at what you said.
And as another point of reference, so the purple line... the state setbacks for the shore land, we totally comply with that, and we would... you know, if we get through this, we'd be applying for the state permit as well. But so as you can see from the purple line, we're outside the woodland setback for the... I'm sorry, the waterfront buffer for the shoreline, which is, again, the state shoreline ordinance goes to the high watermark of the brook. So that's the difference. So you have the high watermark, and then you have this wetland. So I haven't been out there, but I imagine the... well, you can see the topography is relatively level down here, and the water creeps up the slope a little bit. But, you know, we comply with the shoreline requirements and will comply. And as far as the lot development, you know, we'll meet all the criteria there. We'll plant wetland species wherever there are buffer encroachments that we're able to on the backside of the development.
So if you could clarify, the green line, is that the edge... is that the edge of the delineated wetland?
Yes, that's the edge of the jurisdictional wetland.
Okay. So everything below that is jurisdictional wetland, and everything above it is not wetland?
It's upland, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Boucher?
Excuse me, sir. Just... again, just for clarification. So with the building of this home on this lot, I think what your opinion is, is that obviously you're here testifying or saying that this is what can be done. So after the house is built, the piece of property is going to be in no worse condition than it is now. I mean to say is that you're not creating any other issues or...
No. So... You know, we will go through the engineering design. We'll mitigate any increase in runoff that may occur from the, you know, the house and the driveway. We'll treat the runoff. We won't discharge any, you know, to the wetland. I think what the conservation's concern was is the removal of the existing mature trees that are on the lot. So obviously, we're going to have to cut some trees to put a house in. But as far as detriment to the wetland, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shaw?
This is for Attorney Prunier. I just wanted to follow up on the CONCOMs. The CONCOMs letter states an unfavorable recommendation. So that was what they stated. It doesn't give any other guidance, and we do have their minutes, so we can infer some of the discuss... from the discussion there, but they did state an unfavorable recommendation.
Yes, I supplied with my application, if you look at it, the wetlands, because I wanted everybody to have all the facts. That's what I'm here for.
I just thought earlier you indicated that they didn't really give a decision, and I just wanted to clarify.
They can... they can give a recommendation or not give a recommendation, and their recommendation... they did not give a recommendation.
Okay. Maybe I'm going to argue... try to be a lawyer myself, but when I... when I see an unfavorable recommendation, to me, that's... that's a decision, and that's guidance. So I'm not... I'm not saying that... I'm just trying to clarify what was stated for the record, and that's all. So how that affects my view on things is not necessarily significant.
Well, you read the... you say you have copies of the minutes and the... Well, you, you read the, you say you have copies of the minutes of the meeting, so you've read the minutes and you, you heard, you're reading what I heard.
I have something else I wanna follow up on and I just, and I don't know whether this has any meaning and, and it might be, I'm not sure you, you know, you'll be able to answer, but in your section, it's actually, I guess, Section C, I think it's at least the, the, one in, in Section C, that's the plan for the neighborhood. All, all of the properties except for, I think, the one that's at Ridge Road that are on the south side or the, you know, that roughly of the Curtis, all of those are listed as not approved? I didn't know what that meant.
No, they were, no, what happened was they went in and the two lots that at the end, and then there were quite a few lots on this thing, and they were all consolidated. And these were just the two lots that were here. This plan is, does not approve any, anything outside of these two lots. The other plan is the one that they were approved by back in 1965. The people that owned this property, they owned it two years, more than two years before this, so they couldn't do anything other than, they couldn't disapprove or, or approve anything unless my clients were part of the, the application, and they were not.
Okay.
So the, the, all I wanted to do is, they didn't say anything we got in these lots.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Attorney Prunier? Mr. Mancara?
I, I can't really tell from, from...
Attorney Prunier, we, Attorney Prunier, we have another question for you.
Okay. I, I apologize, I, I can't read clearly on, on my plan. Could you tell me what the dimensions are of the box that you're showing representing the house?
The what?
The approximate dimensions are of the box that you're showing for the house?
I'm gonna get you the facts.
I see them on my plan here, but they're too small for me to read.
It's, it's not a big block, it's 'cause it's, that includes the garage as well and the length of the house. It's a three-bedroom house, it's not an overlodge.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the dimensions are.
They are, Nathan Chamberlain, they are 24 by 64. So, and again, that includes a 24 by 24 garage, so a 24 by 40 house essentially.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here with questions or concerns about this application? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Sherry Dutzy. I live at 18 Swart Terrace. I chair the Nashville Conservation Commission. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this. First of all, the Conservation Commission works very, very hard to do, you know, what's best for conservation and for landowners. It's rare that we issue an unfavorable recommendation. In this case, we did. We determined a long time ago that it was very difficult to make a decision based on maps, no matter how hard we tried. So we did make a decision that before we voted on an application, we always did a site visit because every piece of property is different. And just because a piece of property is located in a wetlands buffer doesn't mean that it necessarily can't be built on, okay? This piece of property, first of all, is heavily wooded, so we're going to be taking down anywhere between 10 and 14 very mature trees. We're not just cutting the trees down, but the stumps will be removed, therefore the soil is going to be disturbed and they're going to be building a house with a foundation. We checked this out very carefully. We walked off the land, we asked numerous questions about exactly where the house would begin, where the house would end, how far would that be from Salmon Brook. I would assume there was probably five of us there. At the time, we had seven people on the commission. I believe about five of us were present for the site walk. And we, we determined that the land, that putting a house on this particular piece of land would, would, would be, just be a total incursion to that property. Not only that, after we made this decision, well, after we made this decision, another application came to us on a street called Kanata Drive. And that was a development that was done in the early 70s. That street and Huron Drive abut, I think it's Lincoln Brook. So you can see what has happened to those properties over this past 50 years in terms of the erosion. People were talking to us about the, we were seeing sheds that looked like they were almost in the brook because when the houses were built in the early 70s, that was all land. So you had this small brook that over the years just eroded this property. And now you have a number of people on the, in that area that want the city to do something about it because of the land erosion. If we would've had the wetland buffer laws in place at that time, those houses never would've been built in, in that area. The second example I'll give you is Thoreau's Landing, okay? Thoreau's Landing, I believe, was built in the, the late 80s. You go over there now and some of the condominiums are, I mean, literally 10 feet away from the cliff because of the erosion from the Merrimack River. So even though you look at this property today and it looks level, the wetland buffer rules were put in place for a reason, okay? And if a house is built on this property, I think it's, it's probably a train wreck waiting to happen. And that's one of the reasons, that was one of the reasons why we decided to give it an unfavorable recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Dutzy? Mr. Shaw?
I guess I'd just like to, because part of, you know, what we need to judge on all this is we go through the special conditions for meeting the special condition. And there's, there's nine different ones here that we go through. We, a lot of times you might, you might hear them through the testimony. We didn't do that tonight. But I just wanna kind of check in with you as to your opinion on a few of these, if you think any of these are ones that perhaps you believe really don't meet the criteria. So one is basically least damaging, best practicable alternative proposed. So in this case, they are looking to build outside of the wetland buffer. I'm sorry, build outside of the wetland, obviously, but in the wetland buffer. So that's one thing. Adequate erosion and sedimentation control methods. Project shall not impair stability of water bodies bank, I don't think that. But wetland and buffer function of absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired. Do any of those, do you feel like any of those are issues here?
You know, I'm not an expert, I just tried to do this, but the, the last one that you mentioned about erosion not being impaired?
That's for the, yeah.
I think it was the third or fourth one?
Yeah, there's, project shall not impair the stability of a water bodies bank. And then the last one, wetland and buffer function of absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired. So one of the concerns I had is, is when you talk about the number of trees that are being removed, do you feel like that's where that comes into play? Because I'm not, I'm not by any means also an expert or that knowledgeable about wetland details either.
Well, exactly. And when, when you're talking about, take, for example, when an applicant comes to us and they want to take down trees in a wetland buffer because of maybe shade or something like that, the, the recommendation is always that they leave the stumps, okay? And you leave the stumps for, you know, a number of reasons, but a lot of it is the hydrology, you know, of the area. In this case, we're removing 10 to 14 very large trees. I mean, you know, we were looking at some that, you know, are this big. And they're going to be digging up those stumps. I mean, obviously the hydrology is going to change, okay? So I, I believe you're gonna be having problems down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else with any questions or concerns? Please come forward and state your name for the record and your address.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrea Pierce. I'm the owner and resident at 14 Curtis Drive.
John Witham, 15 Mountain View Drive, Whip Switch. I'm her father, but my family's resided there for the last 25 years.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. So the attorney had mentioned that they had previously approved a, a residence to be built on Curtis Drive. It was supposed to be in the keepings with the other residences there. I didn't make a lot of copies of these, but I'd like to present them to the group if I might.
Could you please give those to Mr. Mancara?
This was the original application for 13 Curtis Drive, which he mentioned it, and I think the same group of people.
The application has some highlights pointed out in it that also match the highlights in the 17 Curtis Drive proposal. A lot of the pieces of information that were submitted for 17 Curtis are cut and paste from that proposal from 13 Curtis. And unfortunately, they did not follow more than half of the stipulations for which they state in 13 Curtis Drive's build-out. The house is nothing like the neighborhood houses. They don't match. It's a, it was built with plastic paneling and tin. Yes, plastic paneling with tin. It was, there is no garage. There, it is not, it looks like a tin barn. Family, friends and such ask me all the time and then they come down the street, "Oh, the neighbors put a new barn up across the street." Yeah, yeah. So it is not conformed, it was not built anything like the drawings that were submitted originally. It does not conform to the neighborhood. Again, I'm concerned about the materials that it was used to be built with, being in wetlands and built inside the riverbank. It does not add value according to the, the request. The characteristics of the neighborhood will not be altered. As you can see, the 13 Curtis Drive looks nothing like the rest of the neighborhood. I feel that the first incident at 13 Curtis was allowed. My concern is, is this gonna happen again? And what are the repercussions of the fraud that was created in the design and development of this project that was allowed and now they're coming for another one? I, I can't state that I'm in accordance with wanting to have that happen to my neighborhood. I know they place the word hardship with the properties and the owners. Because the lots are labeled non-buildable, we've understood that as a family that's lived there for 25 years and offers have been given to property owners, both Paula Sullivan of 13 Curtis Drive and the other woman that owns the one at 17 Curtis, I think she's also Sullivan. My family's approached all these people with offers to purchase their land so we could make sure the neighborhood stayed in the condition that it's in, and we've been turned down for years. I know they've been stating hardship, but that is not completely true because they have been offered valuable offers for their land. And although they may be asking 60, 70 and up to $90,000 for a non-buildable lot, that's not a hardship, that's just greed because we've been offering them to save the neighborhood.
Excuse me, I have approached Ken, I use the aerial view of what it looks like and it's hard to tell from the sketch there he has, but this is the cul-de-sac there and that's the...
Those are drone aerial views of the land that they're looking to build on for 17. I submitted ones for 13 Curtis in my opposition on that meeting and I'm submitting them again.
In, in my lifetime, I, in the 25 years that we've lived there, I've seen the water come all the way up to the road there too, where they're looking to put this house, where those trees are holding that ground in place. If they put a house in there, I don't know what'll happen. If they ever get an ice dam in Salmon Brook and that water backs up in there again, the house that's at 13 Curtis Drive would be underwater by at least a couple of feet.
Does anyone have...
Questions, are we here?
Mr. Shaw?
Actually, I'd like to follow up on that last point. So basically, I think what you're saying then is that perhaps what the city currently has defined as even the wetland itself and then consequently the wetland buffer, but it seems like the wetland itself is perhaps, has changed because based on, I think, what we saw, and maybe I need to go back to it, but the wetland itself, I think, is shown as only, I think, coming close to Curtis Drive but not to Curtis Drive. So it seems to perhaps be your contention that, that the wetlands themselves even are reaching Curtis Drive, is that, and I guess I'd like to answer that first.
Sure. There's another runoff that comes off down along the other edge of the property. It actually comes across here. So it's wet on all sides of that. The, the brook itself is, is below this area. This is actually elevated some, but again, in my lifetime, I've seen the water come up above that.
Mr. Shaw, if I could just jump in, just to clarify, that green line is the edge of wet. And, you know, if, if it's the edge of wet, that means generally it, it's wet. And so that's kind of testimony that you could see water coming right up to Curtis Drive, 'cause that green line looks like it's touching on Curtis Drive on those two spots there.
Okay. And also just if, the, the follow-up was, since you have pretty long experience there, would you say it's changed at all over the last, especially 20 years? Because I know there's been a lot more development that's gone on in the southwest quadrant, you know, and I'm just wondering if, if any of that maybe has also, you know, or just natural kind of changes, 'cause you know, brooks like that will change, you know, you know, somewhat. So curious what you have observed over the last, especially a couple decades.
Yes, it, it has expanded some. There is more wet area down in the bottom of that now and as the, as years go by, we see it kind of growing out more. I think the Conservation Commission did an exceptional job and I read all the minutes of their, because they actually went out and did a site visit there, which I think that's very valuable. You can't always really tell from a drawing, but if you walk the property there, you would know what you're looking at a lot better. The, they're also looking at the driveway that they're proposing here is also gonna cross the access path to the walking trails that go back behind that area there as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrier?
Speaking of the walking trails, I remember when Cherrywood was going in, my, my memory was that that's a deeded trail going back over to the Sheffield. When I went to site walk it a few weeks ago, there was a sign said, "Private property, do not trespass," and it was kind of like the sign, I didn't know if it was blocking that or if it was off to the left. So since you're the locals, what's your take on that?
The sign was posted onto the left side of the trails to keep people off my property because people would come up onto my property with their dogs and their kids and such. And obviously for insurance and homeowner reasons, if you don't have it posted and somebody comes with their dog and something happens and you're responsible. So that's posted there. But everyone in the neighborhood knows that it's there for that reason. And I mean, I have been maintaining the property over here where they're gonna, in this part on the right side of the path, so my property, the path and the right side, I've been maintaining that and my family's been maintaining that property even though it's not ours. So it's made so that the neighborhood can access the road and access the trails. People bring their dogs, their kids on bikes. So I've been maintaining this with my family so that that trail is accessible and everyone can, the neighborhood can use it. Otherwise it would be overgrown and no one would ever be able to use it. So the sign's there just for, you know, security and safety reasons.
All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Attorney Prunier, can...
I just wanna check to make sure there wasn't anybody else in opposition.
Oh, excuse me.
I think we're all set with them, right?
Yeah.
So you might just wanna double-check to make sure there's not any...
So, you might just want to double-check to make sure there's not anybody else in opposition.
That's, yeah, that's. Is there anyone else who wants to speak with concerns, questions, opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the mic so these are being transcribed and so that they can, you can be heard.
Yes, my name is Jean Porter, 77 Concord Street. I am one of the members of the Conservation Commission who voted unanimously to recommend against granting of this variance, and I just wanted to explain briefly why I felt strongly about that. And that is that the city's wetlands are a very valuable attribute in the city, and that's been widely recognized for a long time, and this is along all of the waterways in the city, so many of which are critical. And about 30 years, almost 30 years ago, the city recognized that heavy development along the edges of the wetlands was detrimental to the wetlands themselves and to the brooks and rivers. So, they established a buffer around the wetlands that's had basically, "Don't build anything in this buffer without good reason." Now, we walked the thing, and we looked at the plans and the big trees that are stabilizing the buffer now, and have looked for a good reason to build a house there. And the good reason that I hear is that, well, there was a lot there before the wetland buffer was established, and so therefore, we shouldn't take value from the owners by preventing them from building. That's an argument that should have been held in 1991 when the city established a wetland buffer, and that's the reason I voted against, voted in favor of rejecting this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And in the letter that we received, and I probably should have addressed this to your chairperson, and I apologize to the chairperson, but when it states here, as Mr. Shaw tried to elicit, the Conservation Commission did indeed issue a determination and/or a ruling when it stated that this was an unfavorable recommendation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here with any concerns, issues? Seeing none, Attorney Prunier, you may now have five minutes in rebuttal. And after Mr. Prunier has spoken, one of the people who have come up in opposition has the right to rebuttal also. And you would all probably want to get together to see if you're coming up, who you would want to elect as the person to come up and speak. Mr. Prunier, you have.
I'm chairman, members of the board. For the record, again, my name is Gerald Prunier, and I'm attorney representing the applicant. This is property that is owned by individuals who purchased this property long before their property was burdened by the City of Nashua. They're entitled to do something with their property. They're the ones that spent the money on it. Let's take the trees, for example. Tomorrow morning, I'm going down, I could go down and get a timber permit and cut those trees. Nothing wrong, nothing can stop me. That's what I can do. The other thing is, architecturally, we all have different styles of houses. We all do it, but they're all single-family. And that's what's being proposed here, is a single-family house. You can have different ideas about the architecture, and you're entitled to it, just as the people are entitled to build a house that they want. It's okay for people to go across our property, but with trails that don't exist. The trail is our property. People go over it. I don't think, and I will not recommend to my client, that they go down tomorrow morning to get a timber permit. But that's what could happen. So, there's nothing that stops it. We want to do something, we want to do it with regulations, we want to do it with the city boards to make sure that we have as minimum impacts as the intent was with the zoning, I mean, the wetland ordinance. That's why we're here tonight. That's why we propose to take 15 feet off of it to bring it closer to the road. We're trying to work within the ordinance that the city imposed upon us. The hardship was put on us by the city. And rightfully so, they want to protect the wetlands, and I'm all for it. But don't take my land. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Mr. Shaw?
Attorney Prunier.
Attorney Prunier?
So, I guess I'm going to try to do my lawyerly thing again. So, I'm going to, I'm going to argue that my understanding, and maybe somebody can help me out, is that if you wanted to go cut those trees tomorrow and pull that timber permit, you'd still need a special exception to work in the wetland buffer. So, we've heard other cases like that. So, I understand the outcome would be different, and perhaps even CONCON would favorably recommend that, knowing that you weren't going to disturb the, you know, the soil and pull up stumps. But I guess my understanding is you couldn't just go cut trees down in that wetland buffer tomorrow.
Well, we won't be put to the test, let me put it that way.
Attorney Prunier.
Attorney Prunier. Please don't leave.
We're not letting you go.
I'll stay up here.
I want to understand a little bit more because I've read some of your testimony, I read all your testimony at the CONCON meeting. Again, I'm just trying to understand the other, the other side of this, this issue here. From a legal standpoint, and again, that's just from my knowledge, what is, what is the issue right now if this is not approved? You talked about some taking, I need to understand, or I'd like to know more about kind of what we're talking about.
I'm going through the process of trying to avoid having to go to court by applying for the permits necessary from the various boards to continue to do what this property is zoned for. People have rights. The people that spoke against us have rights. The Conservation Commission has rights. My client has rights. It has a piece of property that it joined the two lots that were approved. This is, this is improved property, proved lots. They joined the two lots in order to make it more buildable, but they still can't build it because they need the permits from these bodies. If we can't get it, then our land is being taken. It's being taken by the City of Nashua. Because it's, it changed the law that affected, these lots are vested in grandfathering. We can't stand still and watch our money that we pay for these lots go out the window because the city's changing the zoning ordinance. The law, the constitutional law of the United States says you can't take our land without paying us for it. And you've heard the argument before, you had the argument with Kathy Drive. You didn't have it with the one on Curtis because you approved those lots. But you've heard of all, you've heard the law as far as vested in grandfathering is concerned.
So, in your, and again, I'm just asking, it's not really based on a decision I'll make, but in your professional opinion as a lawyer, you sound like you're very confident that this is a case that, that you would or could bring to court, and you feel at a point now that, that there's something that you could win, or, you know, to, and again, I'm just trying to understand the whole taking part.
My clients bought these, that bought these lots, approved by the City of Nashua. Thirty-something years later, the City of Nashua decides, "We're going to do these things and pass laws." You're now taking my client's property if I can't build, if they can't build on it. You've taken their property. Just think of yourself, if that happened to you. You don't have to sit there and take it. You own, the City of Nashua has unconstitutionally taken my property if I can't build on it.
Okay, thank you.
I just.
It's just, it just makes sense.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, I guess it's more of a statement than a question, but the use of the lot in your definition is a single-family home. I think you can make an argument that the lot could be used for other things. We've had testimony tonight that there's interest in the lots for whatever, pleasant open space or this or that.
I didn't go.
So, I think the argument lies not in your definition of what a useful lot is, but what in the public arena other people could, would use as a, as a lot.
Jack, I'll ask you. What are you going to use it for? Tell me. You can't use it for anything else. It's zoned, single-family. You have to use it for single-family. And if you can't use it for single-family, what do you want to put, a variety store on it? It's not zoned.
Yes. Please, you have.
I would confirm that that.
I, I know.
We're trying to make sure.
Would you please state your name again and your address for the record? I just want to clarify, and I saw the nodding of the heads, so that's why I went that it was okay to have you be the spokesperson to come up and speak, and you will now have five minutes in rebuttal.
Okay, Sherri Dutzy, 18 Swart Terrace. I have a couple of things, if I can remember them. First of all, you should be aware that we tried very hard when we did the site visit to figure out a way to, if we could relocate the, the house. So, we looked at a number of different angles, you know, could we, could we do this, could we do this on the property to kind of make it work? And we couldn't do that, okay? The second thing is, in terms of what you can do with the land, it was my understanding that I did hear people on the street who said they wanted to purchase the land. It would be ideal for wildlife habitat, so you could, you could, you could use that property for a bee habitat, for a pollinator habitat, and which would add a lot of value, you know, to the area and to the, to the neighborhood. Regarding the fact that these individuals purchased a piece of property that they cannot use for the intended purpose, I believe that property, most undeveloped land, you either buy it to build on it at the time of purchase, or it's speculative. I believe these people have held this property for a number of years, which would lead me to believe that it was purchased on speculation. And whether it's the law that changes or the market that changes, stuff happens. In 1994, we bought a lakefront property for $150,000, and we sold it seven years later for $100,000, and we were happy to get rid of it, okay? I mean, the market changed. That, stuff like that happens, okay? So, I, and the last point, Mr. Shaw made that point, and that is, they couldn't come tomorrow and get a timberland certificate and cut down the trees without coming to the Nashua Conservation Commission, and we would ask them a number of questions at that time in terms of why they were going to be doing that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Dutzy? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, I will close the public hearing, and I'm now going to open the public meeting, which is where this board will deliberate, and the public cannot speak during this time. The board deliberates on its own amongst itself. And does anyone have, or who wants to start the conversation? Should I start with Mr. Mancara?
Why not? So, I absolutely sympathize with the right of a property owner to use his or her property in the most reasonable, realistic, viable way possible, and I do agree that in this zone, that would be a single-family home. But I also believe that there's a point at which a lot isn't a buildable lot, and that's really my concern in this case. But when I, when I look at, and it's kind of why I was, although granted, I was struggling to read the plans, why I was kind of zooming in on what's the building window, what's the building envelope on this property today? And the answer is zero. There is no building envelope on the property that isn't within a wetland setback or the city setback. If it were a relatively, you know, minor incursion, an incursion into the buffer to allow otherwise a portion of the property outside of the buffer to be developed, I might feel differently. But I also zoomed in on the question about the dimensions of the house, because part of my concern is, is that, and by the way, I'm willing to be talked into a different direction, but part of my concern is, is that what we're seeing is really a pretty modest footprint for a house. The window, the area that is shown as, I'll take the limit of clearing, which is still with entirely within the 75-foot buffer, is really small. That doesn't allow adequate room, in my view, for what people would typically want for a yard. There's virtually no backyard to the property whatsoever or side yard. There's no room to build sheds. There's no room for the customary kinds of things that we so commonly and routinely see. And so, I really question as to whether, even with the relief that's sought, what you have is a viable single-family lot. So, that, that's really my struggle in looking at this application.
Mr. Shaw?
I guess I'm, I'm very mixed on this. I share a lot of Mr. Mancara's sentiments. I don't like being in the position of where we feel that we might need to do something that doesn't allow somebody to use their property as for its original intended use. And it's one thing when we're judging about, you know, going, you know, different incursions and stuff, but in this case, you know, it's kind of already stated, it's pretty significant. So, and I guess, you know, I know we've been asked to consider those other cases, and I think they are very similar, but at the same time, I do think there's, you know, there's some significant difference here in terms of the impact to the existing vegetation and function potentially of that wetland buffer. And so, that still raises a lot of concerns for me. But I guess I mostly kind of want to see kind of what the rest of my colleagues have to say and kind of see where that leads us. So, but again, I'm, I'm not, I mean, we are dealing with a special exception, so if the criteria we believe can be adequately met, then we need to basically approve this. So, I think it, that's still kind of where the tipping point for me is, and I don't think it's so obvious one way or the other. I think it's very much, you know, kind of at the, at the margins here of what is, you know, is the criteria really being met for these, these special conditions?
Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to wait.
Okay. Ms. Boris?
I'm also going to wait to what my colleagues have to say. I'm very confused.
Mr. Carrier?
Well, my thoughts are pretty similar to Mr. Mancara's. In summary, I feel it doesn't meet the criteria number four of the special exception criteria. Let me just read that. "The overall impact of encroaching into wetland or buffer is necessary for the productive use of adjoining buildable land, and as such, non-encroachment is outweighed by the benefits thereby derived." I interpret that as, as the criteria that says, is this overall project of benefit where it outweighs, you know, the building or the disturbance of the wetland or the buffer? I don't feel that this rises to that level. And I see it, as Ms. Dutzy says, I, I believe that it's a bit of speculation whenever you buy a property. I was visiting a friend on cottage on Mary Meeting Lake a few weeks ago, and I was kind of stunned because there was this rock jetty that's like a dock going out into the lake. And I'm like, geez, that's interesting. You know, how'd that get in? And he's like, oh, my grandfather built this cabin. He built that jetty. Of course, you can't do that now, but it's there. And I see that as if a property was developed before the wetland laws were in, it's there. I feel this is a reasonable test of if it were to be denied, if this board were inclined to deny this. To me, it's beyond this board to make a decision of saying, let's okay this, because if we okay something with this much wetland on it, it pretty much, I think any piece of property that has this much wetland can do it. And, you know, back when this original plot was laid, and we see it a lot of times in French Hill, there's just kind of this X, Y, like, here are the lots, details to be worked out later. Well, 50, 60 years later, here we are with all these other regulations that come in. I think, I think it doesn't meet criteria four. And I just wanted to make sure I answered the question. If I lived near this piece of property or the butter to it, I'd love to own it. I mean, I live on Salmon Brook, and my neighbor has an awful lot of property that's, you know, not buildable. And I'd love to own it. I've approached him a couple of times. They say, hey, if you ever want to sell that, or we could change a property line, because I think it would be nice just to have it as open space. So I think there is some value in that. And, yeah, I disagree that it must be used as a single-family home, and I'm inclined to not approve this. And I'm certainly willing to be persuaded otherwise.
Did you want to speak now, Mr. Boucher?
Yes. I agree that this lot is one of the more unique lots as far as its constraints, let's put it that way, with that I've seen in a while. So again, I'm kind of torn a little bit, torn both ways. Wanting to, you know, hearing the Concom and listening to them and understanding where they're coming from, and I, again, I think we all appreciate their hard work. But also, I'm looking at the applicant and their engineer and what they proposed. So I'm not justifying the project. I'm just saying that, you know, we've had experience, but I've seen this engineer come before us before. I think they're a reputable firm. I don't think that they would be honestly putting something forth that they believe would not work on the property. And I think, so again, I think that they, you know, they obviously are addressing all the issues for that. And again, I think because all of it is in that buffer, and it's not just part of it, I think this is, you know, obviously what the struggle is. So again, I'm kind of in two different places right now. But I'm very strongly, you know, understanding that what's being proposed, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of work and a lot of care that would be taken on this lot. So, you know, again, I'm having a hard time with that, with the proposal, with the expertise that's being, being shown to us and given to us for the development of this lot. So that's where I'm having some difficulties to overcome that.
Ms. Boras?
I'm in agreeance with my colleague. I'm torn between what's been presented this time. I would not move forth.
Okay. I agree. Oh, Mr. No, go ahead, Mr. Mancara.
I was just gonna make two more points, because I do agree that, and I believe that the applicants have made an effort to, you know, provide us with a proposal that has the least possible impact. So that's the reason for the variance request that follows us, is to try to push it closer to the street. So I think that they most certainly have tried to do that. But just to add to Mr. Carrier's point on criteria number four, what does jump out at me is that it's the overall impact of encroaching into the wetland or buffer areas is necessary for the productive use of the adjoining buildable land. There is no adjoining buildable land. It's entirely within the buffer. So that's kind of goes back to a point I was making earlier, is that this isn't just that there's a buildable area and they need to encroach in the buffer. It's, this lot is completely consumed by the buffer. The other just points I wanted to touch on were criteria number seven, that the proposed activity or use shall not significantly impair wetland capacity to provide important wildlife, fishery functions, et cetera. And nine, that the wetland and buffer functions of hydraulic absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired. I'm not an expert in either of these areas, but I did just want to note that we did have specific testimony from the Chair of the Conservation Commission that both of these areas would be impaired, that the wetland functions would be impaired, particularly with the removal of entire trees, including their root system. So I just figured I'd bring that one up as well. Sorry to interrupt your flow.
No, thank you. You brought up what I was gonna state. No, that's perfectly fine. It just validates or reinforces my thought processes. Generally, when we look at something that has to do with wetlands, we always look to the Concoms, the Conservation Commission's recommendations. They weigh heavily in our thought processes because they're the experts on the wetlands, and we take their thought processes, their vetting, seriously. And that's why I wanted to make sure that your point, Mr. Shaw, was clarified, that it absolutely was a determination made by the Conservation Commission, that this was unfavorable, that it wasn't just a statement, it was an actual determination, and it was a statement given. While I sympathize, empathize with the property owner for wanting to utilize their property in the manner that any owner should be allowed to, we are here and we regulate a lot of owners' usage many, many times. But for me, the wetlands, the erosion of the soil, the damage that could be done, not just to that property, but other properties surrounding it, the cons right now outweigh the pros. And with three distinct challenges to these special exception criteria in number five, seven, and nine, based on our own rules, it doesn't meet all of the criteria. Therefore, we would be remiss in our duty if we went ahead and said, yes, it did meet all criteria, and accept it. And I think it's for that reason that I am not in favor of this application. I guess I will ask if anybody would like to have any further discussion? Would somebody like to bring forward a motion? Mr. Carrier?
I just want to clarify. I know we've touched on this about kind of the trade-off between the front yard setback and the wetland disturbance. And, you know, just to make sure we have it out on the table, to, if we were to better meet the criteria of what, of protecting the wetland, you know, that house would move yet further, but then we're, then we have a house right up on the street. So I just want to say, I think we're all cognizant that that's the case, and we're not comfortable, you know, proposing the house to be further to get it out of the wetlands. And even though we didn't really say it's this versus the other, that's the situation in front of us. There's no room in the front. Or, I guess I'm saying, if we, if the house were proposed further front, we'd be struggling with a very small setback, if any at all, in the front, which would be out of character.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and I agree, Mr. Carrier. I think Mr. Mancara kind of made that point. Like, the applicant really, I think, had done the best job possible to try to find a situation here to try to balance out all of these constraints. And so I agree very much that to bring it much further forward on the property starts to really go against, like, the look and feel of the neighborhood, and yet, you know, you're trying to balance out the encroachment into the wetlands, or at least the proximity to the wetlands, et cetera. So I think, again, to the applicant's credit, I think I'd be very much in favor of that, you know, relief to the setback. I don't think doing it any further, you know, would really make, I think you'd start to trade off those other benefits. So I think it's already kind of like, what could be done here is pretty much, I think the best thing has already been proposed. I don't really think there's something else to go for. So I appreciate you kind of raising that, and I think it's important for our discussion to occur on that point as well as we've deliberated here, so.
I agree. And Mr. Mancara did bring up that, as the house sits now, people could not reasonably enjoy their property or a quality of life based on this small acreage that would exist. And to bring it further, to try and give them some, doesn't seem to work either. I think we're all struggling to meet the needs of the property owner versus the needs of the land. And it's just not, we can't, we can't fix this, and I think every one of us wishes we could. So would anyone like to entertain a motion? Mr. Carrier?
Well, I'm seeing at least three non-favorable votes here, maybe more, so I'm just gonna make a motion to deny. And this is gonna be on the special exception. And let's just see where we go after that, I guess. So I'm gonna make a motion on the special exception. Again, I'll just abbreviate here. It's 17 Curtis Drive. It is listed in the Table of Uses, which is 190-112. I'm making a motion to deny on a couple of points here. Moving to number four, the special regulations, per our discussion, the board finds that point number two, point number four, or point number two, the least damaging root and methodology, number four, that the overall impact of encroaching into the wetland or buffer areas, that's point number four, I think the board finds that those two criteria is not, are not met by this application. Also, point number seven and nine, the board is relying on the Conservation Commission testimony that the proposed activity, point number seven is that the proposed activity use shall not significantly impair wetland capacity, that's number seven, and number nine is that the hydrologic absorption capacity and storage overall shall not be impaired. So in summary, that's points two, four, seven, and nine are not met in this application. I think that, and I will leave it at that, that based on that, I make a motion to deny the special exception.
Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw seconds that motion.
Discussion on the motion.
I know.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by raising your hand. That's one, two, four.
I've got it. Oh, I'll catch up.
Okay. Are you, are you okay?
Yep.
And all opposed to the motion, that's one, that's Mr. Boucher. So the motion for a special exception is denied. A motion on the variance? Mr. Carrier, do you want to continue on?
I guess I turn to the board to discuss this area variance, whether we find this moot based on the last, or do we take it in totality that the encroachment is not within the spirit?
And if we take it in totality, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Carter, Mr. Falk a question, do we then amend the motion?
In the past, there have been motions that just state that it's moot point, because if the special exception is denied, then the variance would automatically deny it. But I think you should go over all the points of law, just to be more thorough, in case this ever ends up in a higher authority, to show that the board is thorough with all the points of law. So I think you should go over all of them.
Okay. So to do our due diligence?
Sure. Hazard of motion. I'll make a motion, again, same address, 17 Curtis Drive, and this is the area variance to encroach 15 feet into the 40-foot required front yard setback. I believe the variance is, I believe the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Certainly, we've talked about the special conditions of the wetlands in the back, but with the home being proposed to be 15 feet forward, I think this board finds that that encroachment is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and doesn't match the homes immediately in the area. I think the board states no value on whether there's adverse effect to the property values of the surrounding parcel, but the board finds it is contrary to public interest to have the 15-foot encroachment. So with points two and four not being met, I make a motion to deny.
And is there a second? Mr. Shaw seconds that. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Mancara.
I would just add that part of my reasoning in voting in favor of the motion is, given the fact that the special exception was denied, I don't think that this criteria can be met.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that, yeah.
Would you like to include that into the motion?
I'd like to amend the motion to include that to the motion.
And is that okay with you, Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mancara, for articulating that. All those in favor of denying the motion, please signify by raising your hand. That's four.
Just to clarify, that was to approve the motion to deny.
Yes, that's to approve the motion to deny. And all those opposed to the motion to deny, that's one, that is Mr. Boucher. Mr., our attorney, Prunier. Any questions, please refer to Mr. Falk, and you have 30 days to dispute the decision of the board. Are we okay to go forward?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll be checking.
Now I can take a break?
Yeah, just give me a minute, actually.
All right. The board's gonna take about a two-minute break, please.
I forgot, when you make a motion, then you're the clerk. It's double duty.
Can't write and make a motion.
Forgot as I was kind of like, oh, yeah. Jack would be good to do this one.
Don't worry.
It's okay. I'm just going to go with it. That's easier. Now I could.
It's easier to get out.
Oops. No, it's just really difficult not to have to work. Okay, so I can call everybody back. And it's right, I do read this, right? I should have broke my gavel. I just read.
I'm going to bring us back to order, please. And we will now call case number two. KRE-BSL Husky Nashua LLC and Joseph Strigle and Kimberly Biscalo Stewart, Benchmark Assisted Living, okay, owners. The Benchmark Assisted Living is the applicant, 672-674 West Hollis Street, Sheet E, lots 2151 and 2150, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-119, colon, A, number four, to expand a non-conforming use by constructing an attached addition, adding fourteen assisted living units to the existing, existing eighty-four unit assisted living facility. This is in the R9 zone in Ward Five. And would you please state your name for the record?
Good evening. Hopefully, this is adjustable. My name is Bill Cook. I'm Development Director with Benchmark Senior Living. With me tonight, I have Dave Utesman, Principal from Utesman Associates.
Mr. Cook, could you please also give us your address?
Oh, sorry. My personal address?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Twelve Chauncey Drive, Oxford, Connecticut.
Okay. Welcome to New Hampshire.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. So, with me tonight, I also have Dave Utesman from Utesman Associates, Principal Architect, Earl Blatchford, Senior Project Manager from Hayner Swanson, and Brian Boselé, who's the Executive Director of our property. I would like to note that the packet that was submitted was prepared by Mark Fugere of Fugere Planning, and unfortunately, due to a prior commitment, he was unable to be here tonight. So, you do have the packet, so I'm going to go through the packet and address everything. May not be exactly word for word, but try to go through it as best I can. So, again, I'm here on behalf of what we call Nashua Crossings, which is our Benchmark Assisted Living Facility on 674 West Hollis Street. And we're here to request to add fourteen assisted living units to an existing eighty-four unit assisted living residence, consistent with the requirements of Article 12 Nonconformities, Section 190-119 for nonconforming uses, expansion of the Nashua Land Use Code, as well as other criteria outlined in a special exception application. So, as such, we offer that a nonconforming use may expand outside of the existing structure subject to the approval of a special exception as provided. And in conducting this inquiry, the zoning board of adjustment shall consider, and like, I will get into the individual points to follow, so the extent the use in question reflects the nature and purpose of the prevailing nonconforming use. In this case, it's essentially exactly the same as the existing use. So, the proposed expansion will be an addition of fourteen assisted living units to an existing eighty-four assisted living unit facility. That facility is located, the addition and expansion will be located in the center of the site, replacing in the same location an existing single-family home. The original facility was constructed in 1999 and was expanded in 2014. When this was originally constructed, assisted living wasn't allowed use with the approval of a conditional use permit, and that was also the case when we completed the expansion. Since then, that has changed, which is why we are here this evening. Second point would be whether the use at issue is merely a different manner of utilizing the same use, or constitutes a use different in character, nature, and kind. Again, the proposed assisting living units will be identical to the units that currently exist, and no change of use is occurring, and this is also consistent with the use approved in 1999. Whether the site will have a substantially different effect on the neighborhood, this use will have a limited and diminutous effect on the neighborhood. The site is surrounded by other multifamily housing units and elderly housing units. And in addition to that, a few residents actually drive. We do provide transportation services, and minimal staff will be provided as a result of this addition. And the board will also look at whether a nonconforming use shall only be altered where the expansion is a natural activity closely related to the manner in which a piece of property is used at the time of the enactment of the ordinance, creating the nonconforming use. So, as noted above, when originally constructed, this was a conditional use permit that was approved by the planning board. There was a single, single-family house that was adjacent to the property, and as part of the deal when the original construction was completed, that property had attached to it a right of first refusal for when it came up for sale for our property. So, it was always the intention that when that particular property became available, we would actually purchase that and add it to the existing property. So, that extension is a natural expansion of the existing, existing facility, and is exactly related to the manner in which the property was originally zoned. Any expansion of a nonconforming use must be evaluated in the context of the zone in which it is located. This site lies in the R9 zone, so an adjoining uses include the Westgate Village, which is a multifamily structure in garden-style buildings. In addition, there's a thirty-eight-unit garden-style elderly housing development across the street, and a, and a twenty-six-unit condominium and convenience store nearby. So, I would say it's consistent with the uses. Purpose of request, so we described the nature of our proposal, so very specifically. The proposed fourteen-unit expansion to an eighty-four unit existing facility involves purchasing an adjoining fourteen thousand two hundred square foot house and lot. And I can digress here a little bit and actually use my, so, there's an existing, this is the existing.
If you could take the microphone with you there, sir, just pull it out and pop out of there.
Of course, I'll never get it back now. Is that, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. So, that's, this is the other subject property that I referenced earlier. And then the house is in this area. So, that's a fourteen thousand two hundred square foot property, and we'd remove the existing single-family home, and the two lots will then be merged into one, creating a hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-five square foot property. The design will be consistent with the existing structure, as you can see over here, from an elevation. All setbacks will be met. Appropriate landscaping will be provided, consistent with the quality that presently exists on the site. Does your proposal involve physical construction of an expansion? Yes. If yes, describe the size of the addition. I have a lot of square foot here. I can read through it if you like, or if it's okay. The existing facility has a building footprint area of thirty-seven thousand six hundred square feet approximately, and a total area of fifty-seven thousand. The proposed building will have a footprint of fifty-six hundred square feet approximately, and a total area of eleven thousand square feet approximately on two stories. As a comparison, the existing single-family home had a footprint of seventeen, or has a footprint of seventeen hundred twenty-eight square feet, and a total building area of two thousand six hundred square feet. To the east of the subject site, there are two single-family homes. I'm going to get this north, I believe, up in this area. And across the street, single-family homes, single-family condominiums, quad condominiums. And the entrance to Westgate Village lies to the west in this area here. And that is condominium duplex and fourplex units, ranging in size from five thousand nine hundred square feet to approximately sixty-nine hundred square feet. Do you anticipate the need for additional onsite parking spaces? Yes. And if yes, approximately, how many square feet of paved or designated parking spaces will be provided? Here is one instance where I would like to note a little bit of a discrepancy from what was actually shown. So, we note that there are thirty, sixty-three existing parking spaces, that is correct, totaling eleven thousand three hundred square feet. A total of twelve new parking spaces will be added that will cover twenty-one hundred sixty square feet, that is also correct. What we did not note in here that I would like to point out now is that we would actually be removing three existing parking spaces that are parallel spaces right here in this area. So, for a total net, we were actually building twelve new spaces, but we're actually removing three. So, the net gain to the site would actually be nine parking spaces. Special exception, additional questions? So, we need to answer all these that are applicable. So, total number of employees, so at our building, our total number of employees is a hundred and three. And again, keeping in mind, that's not all at once. We are a twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five operation, so that's everybody on our payroll, so to speak. Number of employees per shift vary. We have three shifts, seven to three average is about approximately thirty staff members, three to eleven approximately fourteen, and overnight's approximately seven. Hours and days of operation, again, just said we're a twenty-four, three, sixty-five. Peak staffing is typically between nine and four. So, we do have, you know, we'll have cooking staff, they'll come in early in the morning to prepare breakfast, and then they'll go home a little earlier, so on and so forth. Number of daily and weekly visits to the premises by customers, clients, vendors, and solicitors, based on sign-in that we see, that we track at the facility, we've come up with the numbers that we would estimate typically twenty visits per weekday and twenty-eight per weekend day, so for a weekly total of approximately a hundred and fifty, fifty-six visits. Number of daily and weekly commercial deliveries, so we have nine typically commercial visits per week. Two of those are for food. Well, I'll call it food. It's, actually, a lot of it's food, but typically, that would be more canned goods and so on and so forth. We have two for produce, two for bakery, and then we have three garbage pickups per week. Number of parking spaces available, as I noted previously, we currently have sixty-three. We are adding twelve, however, removing three, so that gives us a total at the end of seventy-two. And lastly, it says to dis, well, not lastly, but says to describe your general business operations. So, we are a licensed assisted living facility. We provide around-the-clock care for elderly residents. That includes three meals a day for all residents, along with daily activities and transportation. We provide levels of care within state guidelines that oversee assisted living facilities. We provide common spaces, such as dining rooms and gathering areas. And we do have a full-time director who oversees daily operations, as well as numerous staff. Lastly, describe any proposed site renovations, including but not limited to landscaping, lighting, pavement, structural changes, signage, access, and circulation. So, again, the existing single-family will be removed, and the proposed addition will be constructed in the center of the site. The new parking spaces will be shielded from the eastern rebutters by the addition. So, the rebutter's over here, so they'll be shielded by the building. And new landscaping will be installed along the site frontage and around the building in quantities that are consistent with the site plan. And limited safety lighting will be added to the building as necessary around the parking spaces.
Thank you.
Just, actually, in the one last, last part, I would like to add also, that I would like to note that currently, we are running at one hundred percent occupancy, and we have for the last two years plus. And we actually also have a, currently, we also have a waiting list. So, I would generate that this is definitely a need. And also, in relation to the parking, I would also like to note, just add for the record, that the last expansion we did was a dedicated memory care unit, so that's this area here. So, of that unit, we have twenty units there, approximately twenty-six residents. So, from a, actually, from a legal point of view, they cannot drive or own cars. And as another side note, I would also like to note that in the building, right now, we currently have six residents that own cars. So, very limited on our transportation.
You're residents that own cars and on your parking. Will this increase or not have to increase any of your handicapped accessible parking spaces?
Actually, on that one, I'd like to defer to one of my experts, and my engineer is shaking his head no, so I will say no.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to ask the question. You're in assisted living. I know you've got to be in compliance with the ADA, so the question was in my head. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay.
Was very thorough. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or objections? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier?
I think the application was very thorough and very clear, and all my questions were answered in the written application. And I think it, you know, two points that I'd like to highlight is the surrounding area is, is in kind, in looks anyway, you know, with the large apartments or condo complexes, and I don't think that this is at all out of place, and I agree with all the points. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, in going through the application, you know, it talks a lot about the services, and that almost reads like our zoning book on the services that should be provided for assisted living, of which we've adjudicated in the other end of town so much. But this, you know, you know, is kind of meeting that to a T. Not that that really has a bearing on this expansion, but it, it's right in line with what assisted living, by our definition, the city definition is. But I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think it meets all the criteria. That's my opinion.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I mean, in some ways, this almost seems like a, like, almost like kind of a textbook case of like, seems like a great example of expanding a nonconforming usage. It's, everything about it just seems like it's meant to be, and kind of in a different way from, I think, what Mr. Carrier was getting at. But, you know, that single property that's being transformed is kind of surrounded by this entity already, so it's actually going to become more like what was around it. And then, in the greater sense, yes, there's already a lot of this similar usage. So, it, it seems like a very natural kind of thing. If anything, that single-family home probably is more out of character with that very specific part of the neighborhood more recently. So, this will make it more uniform and consistent as well. So, I, I think it, it's a, yeah, it was a very thorough application, and I think this just makes a lot of sense, and I'm very much in support of it.
I agree. It's almost like Goliath is welcoming David right into the fold. It's what you made me think of. It's what you made me think of. Does anyone else have any comments? Mr. Boucher?
I'll support the application. Very well stated by Mr. Courier and Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Minkara?
I'm not voting on this one, but, but I agree, and I just add to it in terms of the natural expansion. I mean, clearly is an extension of the existing use. The fact that they're at a hundred percent occupancy and that there's a waiting list, I think speaks to that. And also the fact that they had the right of first refusal on the single-family home, you know, is evidence that they contemplated this expansion years ago.
Smart. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in favor, and ditto to my colleagues.
I concur with my colleagues. I too am in favor. The hundred percent occupancy, I'm, um, not surprised that they're at a hundred percent. I'm not surprised that there's a waitlist, um, but it speaks to the quality of the care, and it was very forward-thinking of them to have that right of first refusal on that land. That was very fortuitous and smart. Does anyone care to hazard a motion?
Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of KRE, BSL, Husky, Nashville LLC, and Joseph Strigle and Kimberly Scalo Stewart. As the owners, applicant benchmark assisted living at six seventy-two dash six seventy-four West Hollis Street. This application is to, for a special exception from, uh, Land Use Code Section one ninety dash one nineteen A four, to expand a non-conforming use by constructing an attached addition, adding fourteen assisted living units to the existing eighty-four unit assisted living facility in the R nine zone. Uh, it is listed in the table of uses, one, again, one ninety dash one nineteen A four. Uh, there is, by testimony and by all, uh, appearance, uh, there'll be no, uh, significant increase unduly on traffic congestion or pedestrian safety. Will not overload, uh, public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. Uh, the special regulations are fulfilled, and will not impair the integrity or out of character with neighborhood, or be detrimental to health morals or welfare of residents. This will be providing a, a needed service and expanding that service. Uh, and this will be consistent with the, the neighborhood as well, in terms of, uh, many of the other uses nearby and what's already going on there. So, uh, with those things noted, I move to approve the special exception.
And Mr. Boucher second. And before, um, we go for the clerk, um, Ms. Boras will be voting on this case?
Got it.
Good. I just wanted to be clear for the record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous. Five, two, zero. And there are no abstentions and no opposition. In that case, your request has been approved. If you need any further assistance, please get in touch with Mr. Falk. You have thirty days for someone to file an appeal, so please take that into consideration. And thank you very much. I just know I'm forgetting stuff.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to open the public hearing for case number three, um, specifically noting that, um, member, uh, one of our members, Ms. Boras, has recused herself from this case. Okay, case number three. Owner Jamie and Luke Tenarello, two eighteen Manchester Street. Jamie L. and Luke R. Tenarello, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, two eighteen, two eighteen Manchester Street, sheet G, lot one thirty-two, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section one nine zero dash one five. Table one five dash one, number three, to construct an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit on the south side of the existing garage. This is in the R eighteen zone in Ward Two. And you have the floor, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, one eleven Conker Street in Nashville, representing Mr. and Mrs. Tenarello. Good pronouncing, Madam Chairman. I have a handout I'd like to give to all the board members if I may.
Please, and if you would hand it to Mr. Minkara, please. It's probably easier? Or did you want to just give it out? Which, okay, whichever's easier for you.
Probably.
Attorney Wingate.
Westgate? Oh, yeah.
Wingate, I'm at this pharmacy. I'm sorry. See, I didn't screw their name up. Yours was too easy, I guess. I told you this was my first line.
So, Madam Chairman, we have applied for a special exception to permit an accessory dwelling unit for a single-family home at two eighteen Manchester Street, properties in the R eighteen zone. And, uh, the handouts that I gave in you, just to explain, uh, it's, it's less than meets the eye. There's, there's sort of four components of it, I think two of which you already have through the applications. The first, the large set of sheets, there's four sheets showing conceptual elevation drawings, just an idea of, of how this house may be approached and the ADU added to it. Uh, there may or may not be the farmer's porch, for example, up front, but the idea of the layout and roof lines and the like is set forth. Part of that package also has the sort of floor plan layout. And finally, at the end of that first set of four documents is the, uh, is this, is a layout of the floor plan of the existing house, garage, and ADU with some setback dimensions approximate to both Ferry Road and Manchester Street. The second layout that I provided is a blow-up from the GIS map. I put it on the plan, on the pinboard as well, just to give you the location of the property. This property, Madam Chairman, is located essentially just barely kitty-corner from the entrance of Penachuck Middle School, which is here. And, uh, the house is about, you know, roughly centered here in the yellow lot. You can see the yellow lot is about the biggest lot in this immediate area. It has frontage both on Manchester Street and Ferry Road, as you can also see. The last two handouts I gave you, one of them is part of the application. It shows a rough layout of where the ADU would be placed, including a turnaround, which will probably be a little closer to Manchester Street. And finally, uh, the last set of three documents is to give you a little sense of history on additions that this property had over the past. So as I mentioned, the property's at two eighteen Manchester Street, the northwest corner of Ferry Road and Manchester Street. It's about a one-point-one-eight acres, about fifty-one thousand, four hundred square feet. This neighborhood is, if you're all probably familiar with it, it consists of a mixture of housing types, age, style, and the like, if you will. And of course, a lot of Penachuck's land is opposite on the other side of Manchester Street, next to the Penachuck Middle School. This was probably the oldest house that's in that area. It was built at some point between, before nineteen hundred. It's got a bit of an interesting history. Uh, the prior owner, Warren Rollins, who's, was affectionately known as Wally, uh, was born in the house in nineteen twenty-two. He died two years ago tomorrow. Um, he, I gather, he lived most, if not all, of his life, but for his World War II service, perhaps, in the house. He lived with his wife of sixty-nine years as well. She died a few years before he did. The property's been unoccupied since his death. The Tenarellos, the applicants and owners of the property, bought it in December of two thousand nineteen, just two-plus months ago. And they intend to live in the main house with their two children, younger children, with the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, being designed for Mrs. Tenarello's parents, her mother and father. The Tenarellos are with me tonight, as is Mrs. Tenarello's father, Rick Nixon. Her parents have, have some significant health issues over the last couple of years. They've frankly dealt with them very bravely, and they continue to do so. So this whole idea of the ADU is ideal for them. Three generations living accommodations is sort of, um, it's really meant for this type of situation, and frankly, a blessing for the Nixons. Both of the families sold their houses past fall. So I'll give you a little sense of the layout that we've proposed. The ADU will be about seven hundred and fifty square feet or just under. It'll be placed on the southerly side of the property, meaning the Ferry Road side. But it'll be positioned such that it meets the necessary setback requirements. You can see on that, um, last of the sheets on the four sets at the beginning, roughly speaking, forty-four feet from Ferry Road would be the setback, probably about twenty-two feet or so setback to the house at eighty Ferry Road. The Tenarellos gave a lot of thought to how this could be logically placed. What's the best way to do this? And they considered a couple of possibilities. This property has an old barn, which has really been used as a garage, as you can tell from, um, perhaps even, uh, your own, uh, viewing of the site. The nature of that garage, its age, it doesn't really make, practically speaking, feasible to build a accessory dwelling unit on a second floor. It just isn't really the way to go. And you're looking for the elder, the, I shouldn't say elderly, the Nixons are my age. Maybe that is elderly. But the older generation to living a second-floor garage ADU, it's not really workable, and frankly, on a structural analysis basis, it's not the way to go either. Putting the ADU in the back of the house would just push it more towards eighty Dairy Road. Frankly, it'd be, it'd breach the side yard setback if that was the case. Putting it on the northerly side of the house, up Manchester Street, heading to the north, doesn't really work internally with the single-family home. The master bedroom, bath, and living room are on the northerly side of the single-family home. And putting the ADU there just doesn't have the right flow. So this turned out to be the logical place to do it. I mentioned that they plan to put a turnaround as well. There are two parking spaces in the garage. There's a driveway that can accommodate more than two cars, but the turnaround could accommodate two cars as well, but also be used for turnaround purposes. Right now, it's a straight driveway in and out, so you have the tendency to back out onto Manchester Street. Uh, it's not the most, um, ideal way to get out of the property, frankly, especially in the school pickup and drop-off. The turnaround will let everyone drive in and drive out, and frankly, be a good safety feature. I mentioned the property's had a number of additions, add-ons, if you will, over the years. Um, that's why I gave you that fourth little handout that starts with a small, um, plan from the Registry of Deeds. Uh, if you look at that, it's, it's just curious and interesting to me. The, this plan depicts a small addition, bump out, if you will, on the Ferry Street side, right where we want to put the ADU. That bump out on the plan is probably, it's got to be smaller than the ADU that's being planned, of course. The next sheet in this little package, uh, has, is a sheet from the assessors' records from some time back, uh, showing how there was an addition, at least depicted on the assessors' records, in that same direction to its Ferry Road. And the third sheet that I handed out is a picture out of the assessors' records that show two additions at the back end of the garage and the house. So, um, Wally, the prior owner, was, uh, he was skilled in the carpentry trades. I think he actually taught shop at, um, I believe in the Salem School System. Um, so he, he made stuff. He added on and used the house for interesting ideas. So the ADU process, Madam Chairman, is governed by two regulations. We have to meet the specific criteria for an ADU under Section one ninety dash one thirty-four of the zoning ordinance, and then the standard five criteria for a special exception under one ninety-one thirty-two. Pardon me, thirty-two, not one thirty-two. So the nine criteria for a special exception for an ADU, uh, I think we meet. I'll try to summarize them. First, it has to be incidental and subordinate in an extent used purpose to the primary structure and not exceed seven hundred fifty square feet. As mentioned, it won't, it can't exceed the seven hundred fifty. It'll be just under that. And it's obviously subordinate and, uh, secondary to the single-family home, given the two-story nature of the single-family home, the existing garage obviously significantly bigger in size than the ADU. The ADU will be single-floor living. Second, it can only, it can be the only ADU on the lot. That's clearly the case. Third, it can't alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling, or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. And there are specific criteria given to regulate that idea. The first is that it can't have an exit or entrance, uh, on the frontage of the property. So what we're doing here is, there's going to be an alcove, so if you're looking at the house from straight on, where the ADU is going to connect, there's going to be a little alcove, and the door will face not towards Ferry or Manchester Street, but in effect, parallel to Manchester Street. It also will be accessed from a door through the garage. There won't be any new curb cut, which is a criteria, but rather, the turnaround will be instituted. And the exterior design will be compatible with a single-family home, as you can get a sense from the schematics and conceptual we've given. Really, it's going to be a full renovation of the existing house, the ADU added on, so it'll be compatibility and some consistency because of the nature of having to renovate the existing house, which frankly is in disrepair. The Tenarellos are already in the process of doing the renovation work. It's more or less inside gutted is what it's going to take, and exterior, uh, alteration as well, and improvements. The, the next criteria is that the owners have to occupy either the main house or the ADU, the Tenarellos will, that'll be their principal residence in the main house. They have to sign a covenant that gets recorded that indicates this approval and following the criteria, which they would do. The off-street parking has to be at least one more than required under the zoning code. There will be, there's more than three parking spaces available. Two are only required for a single-family dwelling. There has to be an interior door between the primary dwelling and the ADU. There will be doors from the main house to the garage, then garage to the ADU, as you can sense from the schematic that you see. And there can't be separation of ownership between the ADU and the single-family home. They have to be under the same ownership. They will be. It can't be condominiumized. And lastly, it has to be associated with a single-family home. You can't have an ADU with a manufactured housing unit, for example. Lastly, the five criteria for the granting of a special exception in general. There are, again, five elements. The first is that the special exception, the proposed use, is either listed in the use matrix, or in a specific provision in the, uh, chapter of, in a specific chapter in the Land Use Code. And this is the case here, because there is a specific chapter in the Land Use Code allowing ADU Section one, uh, under, uh, Section one thirty-two. Secondly, that the ADU not, or the special exception generally, not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. That's not going to be the case. One additional dwelling unit in an existing single-family home is not going to have a material traffic impact. And in fact, with the idea of the turnaround, we're going the other direction and enhancing the safety situation. Third criteria is we don't overload water, public drainage, sewer systems, other municipal systems. The addition of the ADU won't do that, obviously. One unit on an existing lot, that can easily handle it. Fourth, that special regulations be fulfilled. Uh, that's what we've done by meeting the criteria for the ADU specifically, and that's why I went through those nine criteria, uh, in this narrative. And lastly, that the use not impair the integrity or be out of character the district or neighborhood, and not detrimental to health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Again, the ADU is beneficial, frankly, to health, safety, and welfare of the residents by providing an affordable dwelling unit in an existing lot, not requiring infrastructure improvements that the city, uh, otherwise has to incur when you do new development on virgin property. And it's not out of character either with the district or the neighborhood. As I mentioned, there's a mixed use of age and housing stock in this neighborhood, and frankly, on one side of the street, a school and, and woods. A renovation of the existing house, plus the add of the ADU, will give a, a sense of compatibility with this type of mixed-stock housing. It'll be, look like a renovated house with the ADU added to it, with a little bit of historical character, I think, still sensed in this property. So, I have a few, um, so, letters of support, Madam Chairman, if I may. I have the originals. I'd give to Mr. Falk, if I may, and just, so everyone has copies as well. And I'll just comment on them for a moment after handing them out. I'll give them to Mr. Minkara if I could.
Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Attorney Westgate, you have about 30 seconds and counting.
Regarding the letters, I-- in the-- this handout, we put in red, "Support, support, support, support." So the letters are from the homeowners, one or more of homeowners who we listed on that plan. One of them is from a woman named Barbara Halevi, right here across the street. She is my daughter and my colleague at work, and was not pressured into signing the letter. And was not-- was unable to be here tonight, but is thrilled to have neighbors with two young children, because she has two young children. And we're hopeful. Importantly, one of the letters is from the gentleman behind at 80 Ferry Road. That's Mr. Brian Way, who's-- obviously, his lot is closest to where the ADU would be located. Two of the letters were obtained by Randy Trammell, one by Mr. Tannarello and by Mr. Nixon. Thank you so much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Attorney Westgate? Mr. Mincara?
So the floor plan that you submitted doesn't show an interior door connecting the principal dwelling to the garage. Is that an error?
There is. Yes, there already is a-- there is a connection by door from the existing dwelling to the garage in place. It exists. Are you looking at the--
I'm looking at the--
The big plant here, yeah. If I may just get that one out, yeah.
So that's an error, that it does not show a connecting door?
Yes, that is correct. There is-- yes, there is a door. I walked through it myself on Sunday, actually. But I'm looking at the Tannarellos to make sure I wasn't dreaming.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question for Mr. Falk.
I'm sorry that it didn't depict that. I apologize.
And a question for Mr. Falk. Do you consider a connection through a garage to be an interior connection within the meaning of the ordinance?
Yeah, it's all connected in one particular one. So it's not separate or de-cash. They're all just a different way of doing it, but we consider it all one unified structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there-- do you still have questions, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Any-- Mr. Carrier?
Just if you could clarify for me on the letters of support. There's one from Janine Dowd, but there's no address on it.
Yes, unfortunately, Janine Dowd lives kitty-cornered at this property, which is Ferry Road address, I want to say 83, if I recall. It's the one immediately-- no, it's 81. This is 81 Ferry Road. 83 is Halevi, my daughter. And the last one, if I may, Mr. Carrier, is up here on Manchester Street, 206 from Ferry Road. That's from--
206.
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Attorney Westgate.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there-- oh, I do have four letters of support. And rather than read all the letters, I will read-- this looks like Brian Way at 80 Ferry Road is in favor. Barbara Halley-- Hale at 83 Ferry Road. Jean Marie Dowd at 81 Ferry Road. And Holly and Dan McCafferty at 206 Manchester Street are also in favor. Do we have anyone here with any questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open the public meeting, which is for the board for discussion. Mr. Boucher?
So the only question I had was about the interpretation of the connection. So Mr. Falk answered that. So with that, I think with that, and I'm in support of the application. I think it meets all the criteria. So that was my only concern, was that there was no-- there was no issues with that. So I think it was well-presented. I think it's very clear. Project was declared. That was the only question I had when I got this package on this one, was whether or not that would be considered as one unit. Mr. Falk clarified that, so I'm in full support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mincara?
Yeah, I support it as well. I think it's a nicely-done plan. I think it fits in with the property and the area very well.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I concur.
Mr. Carrier?
Overall, I'm in support. You know, when I first looked at the site and the application, I was thinking, does it maintain the single-family look? You know, I certainly appreciate the testimony this evening that, you know, this structure has been kind of like an old New England farmhouse, which is kind of-- portions have come and gone over the years. And, you know, I see what the presentation is, is like, well, this is kind of in kind with that morphing. And if this were situated, you know, in a neighborhood, maybe more recent development, and this was being proposed, I could see where it would look out of place. But I feel it's kind of maintains a rambling New England kind of farmhouse look. I did struggle a bit with the front door, but I think these renderings, I mean, it meets the letter of the law because it's not facing the front. I had often wondered in some previous applications where there were some new front doors, like, geez, couldn't you camouflage it somehow? Don't want to use that word. And I think that's been done here, with the door facing, you know, 90 degrees from where you might say it normally would. So I think the applicant has kind of carefully and tactfully met the criteria, but also done so in a tasteful way. And I would have been concerned if there were, you know, butters who are feeling it was out of character. My sense is it isn't from a walk, drive-by. So I'm in favor of it. I think by-- it meets all the criteria, certainly by the letter of the law, and I think in the spirit, it does too. You know, you could argue, does it look like a two-family? But I think it's well camouflaged into the farmhouse style. I'm good with it. Just wanted to throw that out, my thoughts on it.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with my fellow board members. I've passed this house almost on a daily basis. You know, when my kids went to the school, whatever. And it always fascinated me, the way it sat there. But I think it's in keeping. I agree with Mr. Carrier and everyone else on that. I like almost the idea of not having an ADU up on the second floor because, you know, stairs are tough to navigate for any of us after we hit a certain age. We don't like them. And so this is almost a safety issue also, and it meets that. And even as far as the disability issue, walking straight in rather than going up the stairs, you never know what the future will bring. And so that is a good use. So I, too, completely concur with my fellow board and support this application. Would somebody like to hazard a motion? Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Jamie L. and Luke R. Tannarello, owners of 218 Manchester Street, Sheet G Lot 132, requesting a special exception from the land use code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct and attach accessory in-law dwelling unit on the south side of the existing garage. It's in the R18 Zone, Ward 2. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. We find that the special regulations fulfill, which are the accessory dwelling units, the applicant attested to all nine of the criteria. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of character to the neighborhood and be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. We spoke about the fact that this is a significantly large piece of property, is a farm-style type house, and that the ADU will fit in with the style of the house. So with that, I make the motion to approve the special exception.
Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's five. It's unanimous. And so I will close the public meeting and let Attorney Westgate and the Tannarellos know the application has been approved. And as you know, there's a 30-day window where someone may or may not appeal. Any questions, concerns? Please refer to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, and good luck. Moving on. We will go to the next case, which is, I think, if I remember. We have a request for a variance, and Ms. Boras will come back. Ms. Boras will be voting-- Boris-- will be voting in this case. And on behalf of John and Geraldine, Richard at 107 Flintlock Drive, Sheet C Lot 1099, requesting a variance from land use code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight feet into the 10-foot required right-side yard setback to construct and attach eight by 19-- eight foot by 19-foot, square foot breezeway, and a 26 by 32-car garage. It's the R9 Zone, and it's Ward 9. The applicants here, please come forward and use the mic. Please get into it, because you are being recorded. You have 15 minutes to present your application.
Thank you very much. I won't take that much time. My name is John Richard. I live at 107 Flintlock Drive. My wife is here with me, Jo. Come Friday, she retires from being a nurse for 40 years, and so this is why I'm here standing before the board. We decided to expand the home and make things a little more easy for both of us. Myself personally, for personal reasons, I currently suffer from rheumatoid and osteoarthritis. It's not going to go away, and it's only going to get worse. I also suffer from a deformed club foot that's two sizes smaller than my other foot, and it's in need of surgery. I just went to the doctors two weeks ago with something. Even with the surgery, it may get better, but could also get worse or it will never be right. And that's only if my cardiologist lets me undergo a three-and-a-half-hour surgery. Enough with me, though. I just wanted to let you know, this is my personal side about what we're trying to In my yard, I have a very hard time walking on uneven surfaces, I mean, because of my foot problem. And so I put a lot more weight on my left, and it's just, you know, so when I go up in the yard and I'm doing things out and back, I usually-- it's very painful to do that kind of stuff. So by having the garage and the breezeway there, I can eliminate the sheds that are currently in the yard. I have them there because I can walk in a straight line from the back door, go across the hard surface of the driveway, and get to the tools I need to be able to do some things around the yard in that area of my house and where the cars are parked. So that goes away, which is going to be an improvement around the neighborhood and keep the character of the neighborhood, too. The driveway that I have, because the land is elevated and it's uneven, the driveway faces north, and it slopes down in an angle to the street because they're up higher in the air. So the sun that comes around is always at an angle low to the sky in the wintertime. So what happens is, the top of the driveway, the snow starts to melt, it dry-- it-- water goes down the driveway, and it turns to black ice for most of the winter. And I'm constantly working on it, so between my wife and myself slipping, sliding, we both fell down at different times. My kids have fallen down at different times. So by having this garage and breezeway, I eliminate having to go walking out there. I can just get to the car, get in and get out. And I'm going to be straightening things out, you know, fix the driveway and everything else. You know? So my goal is just-- that was just what I'm looking to do, but I also understand that your job and the job of the whole-- of the whole project is to show that it stays within the character of the neighborhood, and it also increases people's value of property, but doesn't decrease property values, for sure. And it stays within the same accord with the rest of the neighborhood. And a lot of my neighbors have driveways and, you know, garages and breezeways, and I'm just trying to get these-- get the same type of thing right now at this point in my life. These were all starter homes that when we bought them, I bought the house in 1983. In fact, I found a piece of paper here where I specifically asked the builder if he would put the house to the left more so sometime in the future I could have a breezeway and a garage. But unfortunately, I guess he didn't push it over far enough. So that was dated back in 1983. So as my wife walks around the neighborhood, you know, there has been other properties nearby that have, you know, easements that are-- they look like about three feet or so from the street. I'm not about to walk in the yard, but you know, but the house looks nice. They have a garage, they have this and that, and it doesn't look awkward in any shape or form. Around my neighborhood, you know, my immediate butters, I've gotten letters from the City of Nashville for various-- to do various things. I never had a problem with any of them because what they're doing is, you know, using their property to enhance their own personal lifestyle, and also, they're not changing the character of the neighborhood. It increases everybody's property values. Two of the-- three people who would be directly affected, my neighbor to the right of me, John Ursack, he has no issue at all. Sue, directly across the street from me, who looks right into my driveway, she has no problem at all. And the neighbor who actually lives right where the garage is going to be going is here tonight to speak in favor of it. The other two butters in the back of me, one just asked for a variance. He's doing work in the back of the yard and everything else, and, you know, he has no problem. I'm sure he would have been here tonight, along with the other two. So as a matter of fact, one of those people in the back, the guy, my neighbor out in the backyard there was doing the work, they just staked off the back of my yard. They took the fence down, and they replaced the fence. So we kind of all worked together, and we have no issues. With that being said, my house, if you look at the plot plan, the house is kitty-cornered in such a way. It's not perfectly straight, so it's kitty-cornered. So you-- so I went down, I first brought the application in, and I went down to see Vainant and Parkett. And they told me about these-- this distance here. He said that the-- well, I mean, other surveyors have told me that this is really for the banks, because it says right here it's not perfectly-- it's for the ease-- it's not exactly, per se, as far as the lines. It could be give or take a little bit with these little things. That's what they were telling me what they meant. But they wanted to basically know that the house was on your lot of land, and it wasn't in the floodplain when they did these things years and years ago. So what I'm looking to do is just to put up that two-car garage, and I'm looking for any questions you have, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Mincara?
A couple of questions. So if I read this right, if it weren't for the breezeway, you could add the garage, and you wouldn't go into the setback at all. Could you-- Could you speak to the, why the breezeway is important?
Breezeway is important because on, on, I have a, I have a picture of my house. Breezeway is important because all I have is the windows on this side of the house. There's only two windows over here and the door. If I put in the garage up against, right up against the house, I lose those windows. And it, myself personally, I just don't like the way it would even look. It takes away from the, from the, from other houses in the neighborhood, there's other Gambros like mine that have a breezeway in the garage, and it just looks good. It makes the whole neighborhood look terrific. And, and, and the good side is, my next-door neighbor, Mike, his side is facing me. There are no windows at all, so I wouldn't be blocking his sight, his view, or any of that kind of thing, too, also. But I'll let him talk on his behalf.
A second question. What's the intended use of the second floor?
Pardon?
What do you intend to do on the second floor?
It's just going to be for storage, for anything left over, like with the stuff will go up there in the summer, and some of the stuff will go up there in the, it's just going to be used for additional storage. I'm not planning on putting a room up there. I'm not planning on putting a pool table up there, and I'm definitely not planning on letting my kids move back. You're welcome.
Mr. Boucher.
So just talk to me, you know, we all go out and look at property, and again, you say the fact that your property kind of goes up, and I was kind of looking at how it's all kind of, I mean, so tell me, what are the challenges, or what is the challenge to push that garage back? You know, I'm not talking about redesigning. I'm just saying, you know, there's other ways of maybe doing this, but I notice your property goes up. Is there ledge there? You know, what is it, what's the challenges of maybe?
The challenge, I understand. You mean putting it back in the yard further? Yeah. If you get to my house, it starts to go up like this. I dug a garden out on the side of the hill when I first moved there. I got copper tunnels for my troubles, and I have a stone wall in front of the house if I'm digging it all out. It's all rock and ledge. The neighbor behind me, on the right-hand side of the, of my house, up in the backyard, he was just digging out a big part of the hill right there. He wanted to put a swimming pool in, and they eventually had to come in with those giant machines for like $1,500 a day to start jackhammering out to build the swimming pool in. They pulled a lot of it out. There's a lot of ledge and everything else, and the hill goes up like this, and it slopes down to the left also.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Courier. I was just wondering about the, like, the elevation. When I look at the front of the house in this view here, I'm wondering if the proposed door and the proposed breezeway looks to be, you know, higher than the existing door in the front of the house. Is this like a split-level home?
No. It's all, it's all one level. It's a, it's a, it's a plain old Gambro. I can show you the actual picture of the house right here if you want.
While you're taking a look at it, but I, you know, I see the garage doors, of the proposed garage doors are, say, at this level, which matches the level of the house, yet the breezeway, there's a set of stairs going up. Is the breezeway going to be higher than the garage in the house, or is it at the same level? I was just trying to figure out why the door, the proposed door, the proposed breezeway is up at where like the windows are of the existing house.
I think it's because of the foundation right here in the house is here, and the, and the door for the house is up here, and I think, I mean, Bill just drew this freehand when he did that. And, you know, there's a, there's a small little freestanding deck right there, so when the garage goes up, I mean, it's going to be equal to those steps. I mean, I'll be, I'll be driving, I'll be driving where the existing driveway is. It's going to be higher than this, but it's all going to be on the same plane as the front door. The garage doors will be a little lower because they're going to be at the, at the ground level.
So your proposed garage floor is at the same level of the existing driveway now, or will it be higher or lower?
It's on the existing driveway now.
Okay. And then when you, your testimony about the sheds and the difficulty getting there, I mean, just in the application, I didn't see any sheds, or there may be one in the very back, like against the fence, but did I miss it, or are there sheds back there, or are there not sheds?
Only, when you go up my driveway on the right-hand side, there's two sheds right there, two smaller sheds.
Oh, okay, those sheds right there, all right. So those sheds, I, I'm sorry, by your description, I was thinking you were describing walking uphill into the back into the sheds, but you were talking about the sheds right there to the right of the driveway.
The sheds, the sheds right there are there for a purpose. I would, I would prefer to have them out and back, but they're there because I can walk out the door, and I'm walking on the driveway. That's hard surface, so my foot doesn't, the heel and the ankle doesn't turn around. So I have them there for there. They're all going to go bye-bye. And the garage would take care of those two sheds and then some.
I guess just one other thought, like on the, the windows, on this proposed design, would the windows on the right side of your house remain in the same location?
All the windows on the house, they'll remain in the same location, but when the breezeway goes there, they're going to probably take the door out and also make it, and open it up on the bottom one. The top window stays.
Okay. All right.
And also, just to let the board know, the whole house is going to be recited, the windows are going to be replaced, and everything else, so the whole thing's going to match. It ain't going to have like, you know, one color here and some other stuff here. It's all going to match.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, and it seems that you put the sheds where you put them as an accommodation and modification for yourself.
Absolutely.
I understand that. Thank you very much. It's just in the world of disabilities, that's exactly what you have done. So.
I always find a way somehow to move around.
Well, you know, it's a different ability. Does anyone else want to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. You have five minutes, and state your name and address for the record, and please use the microphone. You are being recorded.
Yes, thank you. My name is Michael Breen. I live at 105 Flintlock Drive. I'm John's neighbor, in one of the houses that he spoke of that has a garage and a breezeway. He and I have talked about this quite a bit over the summer and the fall when he first started, when he first got the idea to put the breezeway in the garage in, and I'm all in favor of it. I don't have a problem with it. I say let him do it. That's all I, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Boucher.
So sir, thank you for coming because, because from my perspective, and probably some other board members, I won't speak for them, the incursion is pretty significant. And what we're always concerned about is what happens to that neighbor. But again, thank you for coming, and again, I think he described the fact that you have absolutely no windows on that side.
No, I don't.
All right. So you have a perspective of this, again, you know, we'll go into deliberations, but your perspective is, is that this new structure will be two feet from, from your property line, and you've?
Well, right now, the sheds are there.
Yeah, right.
So it's not like, it, it'll actually be a nicer view with the sheds not there and with a, with a nice garage there.
Okay. So this is, this for you is a, this for you is a win-win for you.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Okay. All righty. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Seeing as there's no one else in the audience, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, do you want to start?
Well, I guess I have to say, I'm, you know, I certainly see the desire. The proposed design is nice, would be a nice improvement to the house. I am struggling on the special conditions of the land. I mean, there is some topography, but, I mean, the whole, that whole neighborhood from, you know, Harris, Searls, Conan, New Searls, there's, you know, it's all sloping land everywhere in between. So I guess I'd like to hear from the other board members, you know, to, you know, help me out with the application, because I'm, I'm, I certainly, it's a beautiful design, and I see the desire for it, but, you know, I'm, with the 10-foot wide breezeway and the 26-foot wide garage, it's, I think there could be reasonable accommodations that could meet the side yard setback, but that's, I just, where I'm starting out at, and I'm looking to hear other opinions.
Mr. Mincara.
Well, I mean, I'll just echo that comment, and I understand the desire not to block that single second-story window, but that could be pretty easily accommodated by just shifting the garage back a little bit. You'd still connect to the house, and you don't need the, you know, setback, I mean, you don't go into the setback at all. So I think you can readily add a two-car garage to this. There's nothing distinct about this property, really. I mean, it's very similar in size and shape to the rest of the properties. The house is more or less centered in the lot. So I have no problem with the garage itself, and I'm not voting on this, but I, the breezeway, I think, is what really pushes it over, and I see that as something that could be easily accommodated. The other issue, though, I recognize that the butter isn't concerned, I just would note, this is a two-story structure, and it will be two feet from the property line. People come and go over time, but I'm concerned about the ability to maintain that structure where you only have two feet. A future neighbor could put a fence there. I mean, it's two feet. That's, that's, that's quite a significant incursion. So again, I'm not voting on this, but that would be my.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm mostly in support of it. I mean, I do want to clarify, it's, I mean, while there's a second, there's a second level in the garage, and you can look, you know, even here at the plant, it's not a, it's not a full second level, so that, I think that space is more basically working with, you know, within the, more like an attic type of space or upper space. So, I mean, it's still pretty significant. I would like to see less incursion. I mean, I think absolutely the thing that's making this much easier to support is, is the neighbor at 105 and his lack of concern about it. And I, it's not clear, but it looks like he might be very close to the setback or possibly slightly over the setback. It's, but, you know, so it's, it would be very similar to the house adjacent, other than, again, the greater incursion. I'd like to see this a little bit smaller breezeway. I'd like to see a little bit smaller garage and, you know, not have that full incursion, but I think I actually can support the application, especially based on the director butters' support of it.
Mr. Boucher.
I'll also agree with Mr. Shaw, and also add that I used to live in that neighborhood, so I used to drive by there, but I was looking at the property in the back, and my thought was, again, that the challenges were of, yes, getting the garage in the, in, out of the, out of the side setback, but I also know that the top of it is going up in the back, so I don't even know if making a connection with, from the house to the garage in the back, whether or not we could even be on the same, after we do the construction, be on the same floor level, because the property is kind of going up there. So again, I don't know if that'd be possible, but again, I think also, you know, maybe what Mr. Shaw says, I'm putting a lot of weight into, you know, the testimony by, by the neighbor, and the fact that, you know, the, the garage peak is, is in this direction, so we don't have that full two-story, you know, if the, if the peak was, you know, kind of lining up with the house, you know, that would be totally different for me. So, and the fact that, you know, again, it's just storage and no living space above the garage, so.
Thank you. Ms. Boris.
I just want to jump in. I see her little microphones going between red and green, so I'll just let you use that one.
You're the best.
I actually concur with my colleague, and I'm in favor of the application.
And I agree with my fellow board members. I, too, am in support of the application. I guess we could all wish for a little bit less here, a little bit smaller there, but in the end, none of the neighbors are here to dispute the claim and say that they don't want it done. The one neighbor that took the time to sit through the entire meeting till the last case actually supports it, and the breezeway, while it's being built for the use, application, and convenience of this present owner, would be an accommodation for him when he couldn't go outside, so he would be able to experience the fresh air in a different way. So I look at that just a little bit differently. But I fully support the application and appreciate the fact that the neighbor did sit and come to express his full support for his neighbor. Mr. Courier, did you need to speak again?
I think I'm where I was in the beginning, so I think if you want to make a motion, I'll be ready to.
Okay.
Or somebody make a motion. I mean, I'm, I'm, I, my opinion remains the same. That's where I'm at.
Does anyone want to make a motion? I need to see Ms. Boris who is voting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion for John A. and Geraldine J. Richard, owners of 107 Flintlock Drive, Sheet C Lot 1099, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 19-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach eight-by-19 breezeway and a 26-by-30-foot two-car garage. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 9. We believe that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance. There was testimony talking about the topography of the property and the current driveway situation and, and the issues that are surrounded with that. We find that it's within a spare and an intent of the audience. It will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest. A substantial justice would be served. I also like to make a special condition that the second story of the garage will only be used for storage purposes, so no living, no recreation purpose, type purposes, and that the, the sketch that we got representing the, the direction of the roof line is to stay that way as to have it mainly only one side wall, story side wall, and then all roof on the butterside property. So again, just want to make sure that the, it is representative of the sketch, the direction of the roof line.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Thank you.
And with that, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Thank you. And Ms. Boris, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That's four. All those opposed? That's one, and that would be Mr. Courier. With that, I'm going to close the public meeting, and your application has been approved, and you now have 30 days to wait in case there should be an appeal. I would suggest not breaking ground until after that 30-day mark. And if you have any questions or concerns, please see Mr. Falk or get in touch with him. And thank you all for coming, and thank your neighbor. Mr. Breen, thank you very much. It was a long wait.
You're all good.
It's going to be at least a steak dinner. Okay, now, we will, did I see? We have minutes, correct?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure there were minutes, but I've been.
Yeah, they're right here. I can hear them there.
I'm just discombobulating everything.
February 12.
Okay, we have the minutes of February 12. Um, excuse me, could you please take your conversation out? We're still having a meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we- We have minutes of February 12th. Does anybody see any edits, amendments, adjustments, corrections, additions? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 12th, 2020 minutes.
Mr. Boucher. Mr. Shaw seconds that motion. All in favor? That's unanimous?
Who was voting on that? Should we just clarify?
Who votes on the minutes? It would be Mr. Minkara.
You can go.
All right.
Okay. Then we have an agenda for next meeting. There is only one case, and I need to let everyone know that I, on the 10th, I did check out the date. Mr. Shaw, you made me look at that, but I am being asked as part of my employment to speak at St. Ace College. So I will be there speaking that night and Mr. Lionel or Mr. Boucher, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Courier, please, one of you, chair the one case.
We'll soldier on.
Does anybody see any regional impact?
Where's Hideaway Lane?
Mr. Falk?
It's kind of hit away.
It's not near any city.
Borders?
Near border by.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't look like a, a case that would involve it, but I was just wondering, I never heard of it and just wanted to ensure.
Well, yeah, it's Ward 2.
It should be because it's Ward 2, yeah.
Bearagro area, I believe.
I, I don't see any regional impact.
It might be. It might be off Hill Ferry. I think you're right.
No on the region?
No, would have to be.
Yes, no. It's all, it's all no's, yeah.
No.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
Actually, I just have one little thing. It became apparent on the first case that we often get what I would call a C-size drawing or what is posted on the wall, reduced in size. And it makes it, I mean, really like needing a magnifying glass. And so, for example, if, if you took one of those and just cut it in half and had sheet one and sheet two, sure, you'd have to hold them together, but then you wouldn't really need a magnifying glass and.
That one was, we asked.
Very tiny.
Okay.
That was impossible.
I struggle, I.
It was, you couldn't even look.
We had to read it with a magnifying glass. It was, with a magnifying glass, you could read it, but we did ask and it wasn't made available. I, I hear you, trust me. Especially with all the lines on it. I mean, it was just like. It's very confusing.
Understood, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, whenever possible, to not reduce those and just have two sheets, it makes it much easier.
That's what I asked.
Right. Or a 17 would have been fine.
Oh, that's perfect.
Yeah.
We, we wholeheartedly agree. We do that.
Start bringing my eye loop to the media.
Put it on that screen and show it for all of us. I can see it.
What happened to the document camera?
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, oh, okay. Because I was ready to say, why don't we?
And then, yeah, I know, I looked too and I went, where's that little table? Well, there we go. Anything else? Okay, then I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.